Okay, let's call a meeting order. Let's give a no guess. Surprise, that's good. Is everyone ready to pass the meeting here? Any questions or time to take for the minutes? Do I have an approval on the minutes? Is there a second? Set. Okay.
I have one.
Okay, opposed? Interim? Okay, um my report I have maybe a little touch a little different, I think. First of all, Suzette Donovan who has been a member for a short period of time has clearly noticed as not being able to really spend any time with the library board. And so I have set up a meeting. I wrote Suzette and told her I really appreciate her support, but I know how busy she is with the college and with the city also. So I understand that totally. And we're gonna get busier this year. So I can I can see where she doesn't have that time. So I did accept her confirmation and have have a meeting with Manny and myself with the City of Maryville to go over you represent. So if you all have any anyone that you might want to recommend from the City of Maryville. We're certainly open, I have a couple of names already. Go out to the city and see what they say. Second, I wanna thank Kathleen Christie and Dee and Dick Burgess and anybody else who was here at Christmas Eve. And we got to watch the waterfall and what was going on here at the library. It's certainly a different Christmas Eve than what we expected before, what we have ever had before, but this of y'all comes from or know what what happened. Somehow, the new teen room sprinkler sprinkler head that is closest to the window got cold and actually broke. How that happened, I don't know because it was not cold in the room. And uh but it did break. It could have been the roof above it having something to do with it. We don't know. It was warm above the ceiling and there was virtually no water. But that sprinkler head broke. And with that sprinkler head breaking, it dumped all of the water in the existing sprinkler system in the library, into the library. And it dumped it all into that existing room. So I don't know who was here first, like whoever it was that found out, called the city or called the county. County guys were here instantly, be be Kathleen and myself here.
The alarm went off, so I didn't call from Maryland.
And so they were here and they shut the water off. But shutting the water off doesn't stop the sprinkler system from draining. So it back drained a couple hundred thousand gallons of water into the teen room, which all ended on the floor. And then there are outlets in the floor that cut down. Outlets are cut out, so all that water went through the floor downstairs. Went into whatever section, what was it, large books, whatever, whatever.
Uh eBay downstairs?
No, upstairs.
Oh, uh fiction, oversized, nonfiction, yeah.
And pool there, we could see where the low spots were in the library. So so that was interesting. At the same time, the city or the county had enough sense to call Surf Pro. And Surf Pro manager said he was expecting some some calls on Christmas Eve. So he was really on top of things. He had some extra crews already hired. And so they were ready to go, so at three thirty, they were here. And Kathleen Christie set up passes so that these guys could come in and not over leave again. That was fantastic. She and her husband were here and helped move water along with Dee and and Dick and and other members of the friends. And it was truly an amazing amount of water on the lower level. Not as much on the upper level, but it only pooled three or four areas on the upper level. Most of it had flowed down through the outlets, through the libraries. Amazingly enough, Surf Pro was here with fans and vacuum cleaners and vacuumed up all of the water pretty much that 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 day. And had the fans going all weekend, or just all weekend, Sunday, Christmas and the next day. And did an incredible job. And you know, when Manny came back, he said there was no reason not to open. I figured they would be closed for about a week.
So start of Christmas night, Denny called me and I gotta thank, thank goodness that we're part of the county comes up meetings because Denny got onto that so quick. Because I saw Kathleen do pictures and then Cynthia's husband Scott shot a video and that seeing that just made me sick to my stomach. Just seeing that and I'm up in Rhode Island, knew anything about now, just like.
The pictures weren't a lot worse on the upper level than what it was on the lower, the lower level, underwater for the back one. And one of the things that it really showed is why there were, showed that there were no gradients at the lower level. And Kathy's Kathleen's husband had a great idea of taking out the doorstop. With threshold in the door, he popped the door open, took the threshold out and swept the water out for an hour and an hour. And Dee was hauling buckets and tubs, I don't know where she got all those tubs, but.
Well, we put books in them. And they were reused.
She had a cart and as soon as the tubs got about this full, she would take them and throw them out.
Yeah, we, well, and we were putting as many because we still had water coming down.
Oh, it was like.
Our biggest problem was that all of our computer towers were on the floor. And they are now been relocated all to desktops.
But really smart thing about the library was there is no, there are no books on bottom shelf, which I had no idea until three years. Really loved. Which really saved all those books because there was nothing there. So it really was.
One question?
Yeah.
Um it sounds like the root cause is the hard determining is why that's just, you know?
Oh, it was the cold temperatures.
Just just the cold temperatures caused by, but it's it's really a spread, I think.
Yeah, the building.
Yes.
It's very, very similar.
Yeah, and they're looking into that, right?
As you say, does the county, is the county able to do some sort of failure analysis?
Yeah, I know definitely Denny's been over here with a few people, so it's done.
We talked about they got over.
The same thing happened at Clover Hill.
They they got over with the most people too.
Yeah, all of them.
They did some apartments there that you're never had.
Yes, maybe.
On the hospital, that same issue, college, same thing.
Okay.
And so unfortunately, our insurance is a hundred thousand dollars we got them. So
Next time, yeah.
So we don't have that company.
Yes.
We have a working sprinkler system right now.
Yes, it is.
Bring it off, okay.
So we have, we had, we were able to lose much money.
No, just a few books in the teen area.
And downstairs.
Downstairs.
Yeah, we lost two big, um two big tubs because it had splashed up on the religious section, education. And then because we had that huge donation from a bookstore, a paperback, we had paperbacks on the floor.
Sure.
All stacked in, you know, different piles, so.
We have a little bit.
So, so. So anyway, that was that was Christmas Eve in case you like, always have that. But thanks to the people that helped, it was, it really went well. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit. I wanna thank all of you for turning in your reviews. We got, um I I Manny, we were talking today that this is the day that he was actually driving down here for his final interview.
Yeah.
And um so it's hard to believe that it's been a year or almost a year. His review is due at the end of this month, then he will go, I'll go in that form a little later. Uh but anyway, we're so glad, sure.
And now Andy and Stephanie both know why I looked a little disheveled when you saw me on the uh the meeting, I think I told Anjane or Anna as well, the reason why. Um having two dogs that's never been in a hotel room before, yeah.
And I wanna, we'll talk about a more advantaged report, but I wanna congratulate the library and library staff on the Christmas parade. This is a, I don't know if the library has ever participated in the Christmas parade. Certainly not anytime since I've been here, which is forty seven years. I have, I guess from everything that I've heard, it was terrific and everyone did a great job. Talk about that later. Okay, and the last thing in my report, I wanna introduce the new president of the foundation. And Chad, Chad Hampton. No, I wanted to see my other notes. Chad Hampton is the new president of the foundation. Chad is a long time Maryville resident, a graduate of UT, UT University of Tennessee College and also UT Law School. And he is a business and I guess a business attorney and.
Yeah, a estate planning professional.
Married and has two children. And how old is?
Uh my children are fourteen and eleven.
Sorry, wasn't it wasn't your question?
I can't believe that, that's, that's.
But so Chad will be at our meetings from now on and be welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking that job.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's start off with uh some reports. First first off is Manny's report.
So I'm gonna begin with you services and two of the many programs that we had during the holiday season. We had Santa Claus here right before Christmas and we kinda ran into a little problem right before Santa's arrival, the day before, uh but we were able to get Santa here. Um and we also had a reindeer as well, which was incredible. And we had the choir from Erlich High School. They were here, they were all dressed just beautifully in like Victorian garb. And they just sang around the library and it was the perfect amount of people that were here. Each kid or family or adult had to spend a few minutes with Santa, take a picture of Santa with the reindeer. Uh Chelsea had a hot cocoa area for everyone, which was great too. Uh again, it was a terrific turnout, it was the wide amount of people there. And Santa could spend a few moments with each of the, each of the children and families, so. Uh that's my first time ever experiencing Santa Claus in the library and it was great. Singing, it was just so festive.
So what a perfect Santa.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we did, yeah, yeah. We, I don't wanna reveal too much if anyone's watching about Santa Claus. But we, we had Santa Claus's brother come. Yeah, cuz Santa was a little under the weather, so we had Santa's brother, Santa's, yeah, who was magnificent too. So that was the day before, so we had a little bit of panicking and uh you know, Santa's brother from Rhode Island, Massachusetts, we got to come down. Be Santa Claus, but we gotta write Santa books for that. Um we also had something called New Year's Eve and that was in the children's department. And we had over two hundred kids and families here celebrating New Year's Eve. And we had the balloon rock over there, I saw the video video of it, it was pretty awesome. Um Chelsea Tower Water does such a amazing job in that youth services department and programs. Uh right now going on, we have a Lego contest for our children and also adults and adult services as well. So I believe it's Friday is the last day for for um putting in your um who you who you feel is has the best Lego arrangements here.
Cuz you haven't seen her.
Oh.
Oh, look.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's pretty incredible. Uh moving over to adult services, uh we had quite a few programs, including with uh local league Zimmerton. He spoke about Americana music and then we had um Matt York speak, uh he sang songs from the highway. And we had a great turnout, thank you friends for continuing your support during that. Um if you go into adult services, it's like you almost as new slap wall. Um so Kathleen definitely did her homework at the really nice sturdy slap wall. Again, thank you to the county and and the maintenance departments, they're the ones who installed it. So it looks great, it looks clean, it's very well done, so good job with that. We had art classes as well, um past couple of months. There was a waiting list, that's how popular it was. Actually, today we had adult coloring and I went by to speak to Kathleen, it was decent crowd there, adult color, so it was really a job.
Nine, is it the first time we've had it in since before COVID? So we're happy with that number. And they they just came in and some of them had their own coloring pencils and markers and just sat down and went out.
Yeah. Um another thing, and Andy mentioned it already, and I just wanna thank everybody that was involved in the Christmas parade. So I had spoken to Amy over at the mayor's office months ago about that. I I was watching, before I got here, I was watching on YouTube a Christmas parade. Boy, that would be kinda me at the library as a part of it. So I reached out to Amy this week back in the summer. She will let you know when the J C's happen. And sure enough, she did email me and I brought it to the managers here, to Anjane and Hannah about what about the library involved in the parade. They thought it was a great idea. And I gotta say, and I'm gonna miss people on this, but Kathleen and her husband Tom, uh Cynthia as well as Summer and Chelsea Matheny as well. They worked on this beautiful looking tree that was out of, um pages out of books. And um Kathleen's husband Tom just, he had it nice and sturdy on the back of Chelsea Matheny's truck. And which was good because their parade was delayed. And there was some wind there, but it wasn't too bad. And then we all walked, myself and Dee, and that was a great thing with Dee and the friends. Uh they also had a book sale that weekend. So Dee along with two members of Friends were carrying signs promoting the book sale and she did very well that Saturday too because they saw those signs. And instead of handing out candy, because everyone was handing out candy, the Friends handed out books. Which was such a great touch to it, to the point where they ran out of books. And then Bruce from the Friends had to meet us down at the bottom of the street here to hand Dee another box of books, which is incredible. Uh so you'll see throughout the report, there's pictures. Chelsea's children as well helped out. There's a picture of my wife driving with Chelsea, uh writing shot down, uh so that was neat. Also, the library had some great press, it was in W, it was on WBIR, Kathleen. They did this wonderful five, six minute segment of of letters to Santa and Melinda as well as A.J.'s. And it was great and also made the paper, as you can see, uh Dear Mr. Santa Claus with A.J.'s picture there. So that was some great publicity that the library got. Melinda and A.J. did such a wonderful job. Um going over to collections ser- uh services, this is kinda neat. Um so uh Kathy was able to come out with the top item checkouts, some top notebooks, some top DVDs. So as far as the the top item checkouts for two thousand twenty-two, it was hotspots. So top item and then number two is People Magazine. And then for adult books, number one was where the crood adds things, but we kinda figured that was gonna happen. But number two was Rose Road Run, Rose Run by Dolly Parton, James Patterson. A DVD's Jungle Cruise and then Barbie, a Fashion Fairy skin up there. So that was, that was fantastic, just seeing what was checked out for uh last year's review.
Chad, question, question.
Are those basically a hundred percent utilization? Are they always checked out?
Oh, yeah.
Do we have a process we need to keep it organized?
We've, we've been, and actually, I think there was one that's possibly being donated. Yeah, so yeah, we are, okay, they're constantly checked out. Just the only thing you can't take if we found out over overseas or even close to the border. So, yeah, it will be a feat, notice that. And um over in the cafe, uh we had our monthly drink and in December it was Lion Delicious Latte. And again, Chelsea did such a wonderful job with the uh hot cocoa bar, plenty of pictures. Again, Chelsea's with my wife and her kids in back of the truck. Um the only issue I think we had, and Dee and I will uh again attest to that, was they were going up the hill from where the library was and we're just walking and Chelsea kinda had a gun in. So we're kinda trying to run to the street too. And we're all bundled up because we thought it was gonna be cold and then we're like swam.
Well, it was cold when we started.
Yes. Uh but it was, it was great, so we're gonna do it again next year and we may participate in other Christmas parades. I know Louisville has.
Yeah, it's a good one.
So I am in town, yeah.
I'm in.
I think we might do, uh as I see Cynthia laughing, maybe the Christmas parade circus, it was a lot of fun. Everyone really liked the library in there, so.
Well, they won't lose.
The Gatlinburg one.
Yeah.
Just for the midnight?
Yes.
Yeah. Forget the other table. Um if you notice last month, um we had such a wonderful gallery display and it was like an old storefront, profits. And it had the mannequins in there and that's uh Penny as well as Amy that just do such an incredible job. This month it's Dolly, memory of her birthday coming up. Um then we have the top circulation statistics, YA juvenile fiction, Clean Sweet Diary of a Lundy Kid. Yeah, that was great and actually Cynthia came up with it, it was right there. Oh, okay, yes, and this coming Saturday is the season. Uh it's from ten to noon on Saturday. And that is Sheila, who's a member of the reference department. Uh she's the one that kinda needs charge when it comes to the season. I came to it last year, so must have been a little later in in the month, but I remember it was, it was booming here. Be good. Um just a lot on public relations, um so there was an email titled Bookmark and Calendar. And it went out early January and this will be informing patrons of all the big events that are are in store here at the library. And each and every uh month, so that's something really, really neat. Yeah, that is good, yeah. And we kinda see it from partnership because they send out the emails and it just gives you kind of a what's what's ahead, what's upcoming, it's, you know, market calendar. Um and then under my update, uh Anjane and I met with the assistant finance director back in, I think, early December. And as Anjane probably knows, I'm like a nervous Nellie when it comes to the budget, 'cause I just get nervous. Some money being spent, we spending too much, but we don't, we're right on track, you know? And that means a lot to me and that's Anjane working the numbers. As a matter of fact, uh the assistant finance director said that she wished there were other departments like ours. Some are a little disarray or in a mess, but everything was all balanced and and perfect. We are right on track.
If you look at the budgets, I hope you all looked at the budget, I think we're better than on track. We're under just about everything except the income, which we are way over the goal. So congratulations to your new staff, to Anjane, and track all this stuff.
Yeah. 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 And then I'll, I'll say a little bit about December twenty-fourth as well. I do wanna thank, 'cause I was not here and it was killing me that I wasn't here. When all this was just going down and then when Cynthia's husband shot the video, that's when it really, my goodness, what is going on in that building. But I wanna thank Andy for showing up like immediately. Uh Dee, Denny with uh with the maintenance, general services, as soon as I called him, he already done a call, so he knew. I had someone coming over there now. The entire general services team was, were here throughout the weekend and just helping out. Kathleen and her husband and then Cynthia and Tom, they came, 'cause you guys were up in Knoxville somewhere, you drove back down.
You were at my desk.
Yeah, and getting some of the video of of that. And then Anna contacted Dick and I guess Dick contacted the group of friends and you guys were here. Um that meant a lot. It, again, it bothered me that I wasn't there, but there was really nothing I could do. I do wanna thank Andy though for, you know, calming me down after the return, 'cause I was just like, what's going on, what's this? And seeing the videos, he's like, it's gonna be okay. And then Denny, the Christmas night, he did call me and say, everything is clean, it's dry. And I was flying back Monday anyway. So as soon as I flew back, I drove here and it was great and actually Dee was downstairs with a few members of Friends looking at it. It was just business as usual.
We would have to clean this for our inscription.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh we did have staff development day back in November, which was great. Uh we did have Chief Chris um and Keela from Places Stay, they come and they spoke to staff. Um and answered any questions that we may have, um addressed anything for safety or or whatever. So they were great, we had some really, really well-done workshops and I know the staff appreciated that very much. And then we had some fun. So I did ask staff, tell us a little bit about, something about you that maybe no one else knows. And so we had these little quizzes, so we would, one question was, we do have a member on staff that was a prom queen. So we had the list there. Uh we had one that was on Wheel of Fortune. Yeah, and we had one, they went to high school in Shaquille O'Neal. That was pretty cool. Uh we had to guess, I mean, I knew who it was and Hannah knew who it was. But it was fun trying to guess, we had one member play at Carnegie Hall.
Really?
Yeah.
So who are these people?
So uh Melinda played at Carnegie Hall.
Wow.
Yeah, and Penny was the prom queen. And then uh Marsha, who's one of our new part timers, she was on Wheel of Fortune. It was amazing uh what we found out about women, so we'll do something like that. So you came in second place, they got a trip to Disneyland with you, so. Mine was really pathetic, mine was, I didn't know what to pick, 'cause I lead a boring life. It was my first concert was Sha Na Na and Dr. Hook. Have nothing.
Cynthia, I don't even know who this is.
Sha Na Na.
I don't know who you're.
Yeah, Bowser, yeah. Um uh two other things. Uh I'm going to be beginning, I'm going to begin some speaking engagements in February. I'm gonna be speaking at the Kiwanis, uh Al- Alcoa Kiwanis on the ninth. And then I'm gonna speak in front of the Alderman on February the fourteenth. And I'm trying to work out the date and time with the county. And then I'll eventually do one here in Maryville. What I'm trying to do, and this kinda relates to something Andy's gonna speak about um in a few moments. Um I wanna know what the public wants in this library. What do, what service do they want? I wanna kinda clarify, what would they like to see here? You know, we do have a commissioner that would love to see another meeting here. That's great, I, what do you want, you know? Maybe they, they lived in other areas of the country and at their library they have something that they have that we don't. You know, maybe it's recordings, I don't know. But I'd like to hear from them, just so their voice matters when we listen, so. Um that's gonna start in February as well. And uh some of our computers have arrived, part of the LSTA brand. So which is great and I keep working on that right now. That's all I have for now. Oh, wait a minute, no, sorry, I get, I've got some projects, sorry. The roof, the roof, and you, you might wanna speak about the roof too. They are still on track to be completely fine. Now, Mother Nature hasn't been as too fine with the rain and we've had a few weeks come through and it was the areas that had not. And it was the areas that had not been completed, they were in that area working and that's what we leave. And apparently one, this last week, there was a hatch that remained open, so one came through. I will say with the good news, the areas that they've already have completed, no rain. So, that's happened.
Funny thing on the roof, just before Christmas, I put our, I pulled in and there were all these orange things up on I I came in the van and I said, gosh, it would really be great if you put all the U T stuff up there. For for the football game, it was just great. It was all the caution thing that the roofers were using. Just to show that, I guess, see that stuff was gonna be falling off.
Yeah.
But nothing's fallen off. And I found that there is some problems with insulation on the side of the building. Uh The layman's term port is driving and uh old time driver was stucco and the old stucco allows the water to be behind it, turns it into mold. Luckily, we don't have that problem, but there is a loose problem in the in the windows and the door and and the roof as it comes down the side with the insulation. That that's a pretty easy fix, but it takes time. They're talking to the county about doing it as they do the book. So that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Should not really increase the price of the project much, if any. And it's something that they have to do when they overlap areas. And so that that will ensure that there's more water, which is a good thing. So, I I'm hard pressed for them to make it peaceful, but if they are, they're doing the underlaying right now on the entire roof system. You look up there, you see all these stacks of this white styrofoam type product, that that's the underlayment. You put all that down first on top of the metal and then you put the roof on top of that, then you seal it. So they're along, you can't seal it. You can seal it, they have a new product that seals it a little breezy. And so they will be able to seal that roof, but it's a long drawn out process. And they're they're gonna be working hard the next two or three months, sure. But they're they're, it looks okay.
One, one of the other projects that I've started working on the past couple of months was revisiting the book return system. And um I have reached out to a company called Biblioteca. It's a company that I've worked with, they merged with Rea many, many years ago. But I worked with them when I was in New England, Massachusetts. Um, the same type of system, self-checkout, and at the same time having conversation with Joseph Construction. So they're both literally in the same room together and that's what they've been doing these past couple of months is having communications with one another.
That's with the system.
Yeah. When it comes to that project, um, I can tell you we're not gonna move forward until we have all our ducks in a row. Right now, we are in the process assembling those ducks in a row. Biblioteca came to me with a quote and a forest of return, I said, okay, but I want this stuff, this is how we want that. So they're working on numbers. Joseph Construction, they've been, they were here last week looking at that that area as well. And they should be giving us a quote, pretty sure.
If you look at this stuff diagram, th- this diagram shows the outside. And we will move the, move the receptacle, the book drop down a little bit, which would mean that all that road, the bowers, the the landscaping hall is removed and a new driveway will be put in to come by there, make it easier for the customer to get in. And you won't have that turn where you ruin your tires.
Yeah.
And so anyway, all of that, one of the things that when you see the, this book drop, the conveyor belt is huge. Uh, much more, much longer than we anticipated it to be. We've been, Manny and I have been having discussions with them on that, to see if it's really necessary to be that big. Which will will take away one of our study rooms. And if that's the case, then maybe need to look to see if we really need another study room, which I think is really important for why we're here still. We have to look at that. Also, they they wanted to close down our exit door, which you can't do. And so we're gonna have to build a wall there which says open area. Left hand side drawing uh to close that off. And I don't think you all want the book drop area open publicly. So we'll have to build a wall across that too. And one of the things we've discussed with Joseph Construction is that it being glass and just using the existing glass that we have and just moving it. Which is, they've been really good about working with glass companies, which they, it can't be, so we're gonna we're gonna work on that.
Oh, a question on the Biblioteca's mission, is it, are they basically not, you know, works at work for some reason?
We we had others in the past here, um I've had good relationships with them and their customer service. And I do know people there, like if they're not, if the sales rep is not, and she's been excellent, don't get me wrong. But if there's something that needs to be done, I know I can call somebody and I I trusted them over the years. But yeah, we, there's another one that put in a proposal um a couple of years ago as well. Um, it's, so Biblioteca, they, there are two other libraries in the state that have them right now and that's Johnson City. And then I think it's Montgomery County. I I don't know where that is or where that is. Johnson City is, is one of them too, so. Um, we're still early and we're we're trying to, before we bring it to you guys, which will be next month, just the proposal. We're trying to get all our ducks in a row. Um, but they, the great thing is, both companies will be here, so then they can answer your questions.
Okay, they're coming to the meeting next, the next month's meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, and so be prepared for a long, a longer meeting. But we also want them to come with money, uh telling us exactly how much this is gonna cost, uh for everything, including the construction.
Yeah.
Oh, Joseph Construction is joining next month regarding the construction cost. Oh.
Yeah.
So does Biblioteca speak to the new check-in, check-out, or the new check-out um south kiosk?
They, they could, they could, yeah, yeah, they'll communicate, yeah.
Or will they need to, I don't know, you know?
If they need to, yes.
I would think we would have to get some kind of software updates or something.
Those tags can be used, the tags that we have from the previous can be used. Yeah, that was one.
The other thing that Manny hasn't talked about, let's talk, talk while we're in this subject and it's out of out of order, but talk about your tr- your two trips, went to Townsend and went to uh
Oh, to Louisville, yeah. So, and I do wanna thank Andy for uh joining me on those two trips.
Louisville.
We'll just start with Louisville, cause we we met with the mayor last week. Um, and this is on the subject of having an indoor or a remote locker inside, in this case it'd be Louisville Town Hall. Uh, again, it's a product that Biblioteca puts out. And imagine a, and I'm sure you've seen those Amazon lockers or the lockers at
Roads.
Pro, yeah, and you scan your, in this case it'd be a library card on your phone and the locker would would open. What I'm trying to do, especially in the Townsend area, I think we did meet with mayor and the city manager as well, um, a couple of weeks ago as well. We've heard complaints, especially from the Townsend area, that it takes a long time to drive up. And there's no, there's no um idea or or anything in place to have a branch down in Townsend or in Louisville. So, I was thinking of what is the next best thing? How do we bring the library to Townsend or in the Wallin area to Louisville? And the lockers, kind of uh piqued my interest and I met with Biblioteca about that as well, um.
So how do you get the books there? Someone just drives it out?
There would have to be one of us, it would be the courier and then Andy, Andy will be driving. Um, and I will say, well, both mayors were very excited about it. I will be speaking with the Alderman in Louisville, I think on the thirty first at their workshop about that as well. Uh, but they were both very keen on the idea, all they would need to supply is an outlet and then one of those um internet cables. And that I can work with the I T department, okay?
So, just for my clarification, remote locker is is a computer system for people to wear books and then someone will walk down two-way lockbox.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you're at home right now and you live in Louisville or you live down in Townsend and it it takes a while to get up here. You can use our library app, place holds on items. And there would be a selection where you can pick it up at, say, the locker in Townsend. Now, you would have to pick the items up when the, down there when their municipal building is open, cause it will be indoors. And you would receive a notification that your books are in, just go, and your barcode is on your, on the library app. It's a touchscreen, you can scan, a locker would open. If you're returning items, there will be a book returned there.
And how do we work with the app or would we need like a separate terminal on the offer itself, if they don't have the app?
You could use your card too, you could scan the card or type it in. There's a way of typing in your card, kinda like our system here.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
We need uh Wi-Fi access, like just in Townsend, like I don't get any solid service, so you have to connect to their Wi-Fi?
Yes.
No, just thinking about that.
Yeah.
My question is, is this like current staff or is this for pending staff? And then what funding does this come out of?
Well, right now, if we were to get the lockers now, it'd probably be me or someone to deliver it. Would I like a additional staff person? That would kinda be their job, one of their jobs, absolutely. And the budget season is rolling around, so.
We're 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 elected budget until June.
And then would this be?
Yeah.
And then we have talked to the three principals saying that we want more money. And that's all there is to it. I mean, it was a three-year agreement that we we agreed to with, as a library also. Our three years is up.
Could this be a foundation proposal?
I, well, I I, so it could be, but I, the friends have been so generous to us, I kinda don't wanna go there. And the foundation, we're gonna be going, well, again, the book return system is gonna be more money, so I'd kinda like to go that route. As far as the town Louisville, Robert McLeanland and I have spoke and he is a magician when it comes to writing grants. He wrote it for the Skyfire table, so that would be the one in Louisville. And then as far as the one in Townsend, I applied for a grant from Blackberry Farm and I find out actually this one, we will wipe.
So, you can use it more costly, right?
But then.
So there will be no cost, other than the I T, county, no doubt.
And the staff.
Well, the staff is existing staff except for the delivery.
I guess, I would think.
Yeah.
So my only other question is, uh, when I was looking at, like, the re, how many folks live that have cards? Is that why you guys chose Louisville and Townsend first instead of from school?
Yeah, so in the, also as far as a s- a central location, so definitely Townsend it was the distance. Cause me, I work in patron services. I know Cynthia and her staff here at Old Time People. I drove a half hour up here and, so it'd be, especially families, you know, maybe it's hard to get up here. It's basically an hour out of your day just driving to the library. So for Townsend it was. Louisville, I am trying to connect to people in that area. And Louisville has a very impressive town hall. We've done a tour last week, it's really neat. And they do have the space that, these things aren't that, it's like five feet wide, they're not big at all. Who would be the first in the state of Tennessee to have that too, which is kinda neat.
I think it's great. I'm just being cautious to how stretch we are on staff.
Yeah, well, I would probably take the front of it. I don't like driving.
And also, it's gonna be have to check out his insurance too.
I just, we're doing insurance, yes, yeah, yeah.
I check with schools. I don't know if they run uh, like in Maryville City, we run a pony, we call it a pony between the schools. Out of it, Black County School, Cynthia does the same training, so they might be, they're going to Townsend anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like a cur, almost like a curry.
Curry, it is, it is a curry.
So, one of the things that Manny has talked about and and the staff has talked about is more access to the county. And how can, how can we get more access to the county? One of the things that the mayor of Louisville said, which really surprised me, that Louisville is the oldest population in the in our county, has the oldest age-wise population. Uh, I had no idea.
Louisville.
Yeah.
And so that they were really, really interested in this.
And this wouldn't happen until next fiscal year anyway. Uh, it takes a while for them to make it and ship it.
But this is a good wedge for us with Biblioteca too, if we're gonna go to them and say, look, we're gonna pay two more of your pieces of equipment. What kind of discount can you give us? And we've, we've already floated that message several times. Well, keep going.
I'm done, I'm done it now.
Okay, if you did look at the, obviously you did, at the list of where where people are, it was, uh, it shows the population of really Louisville and Friendsville uh area, but we, and we haven't been to Friendsville. I don't know that Friendsville has anything that we can put one of these things in. But we'll, we'll be getting.
Yeah, we're. A lot.
They have to put stuff. They have school.
Yeah, it really is.
They have schools everywhere.
Yeah, and every community.
Never, it's not open, it's, yeah, the thing is.
Open to the public to come in and get it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not most.
And they closed, don't be closing like four o'clock.
Not always.
I said, is there?
The custodians are there. The custodians are there till ten o'clock.
Yeah, but is the door open?
Sure, they can leave one door open.
Okay.
Put it right in the main lobby. I mean, I can see it happening. Main lobby, all day.
Okay, let's, I'm sorry, I really, uh, track yours. Let's get back, guys, on track. Chad, you're.
I don't have much of reporting foundation, uh, because we have not met yet as a foundation board since I have taken over. Um, but I do wanna publicly thank Angela Quick for her many years of service. Uh, to the board, I know you know her and she was, uh, she's a wealth of information, has a lot of institutional knowledge and this and I'm sure we'll be calling her a lot over the next several months as I try to to wrap my head around uh this position. But I am excited, as Andy said, um, I am a longtime resident in Maryville City. I've lived here for one month, my wife and I both for forty-six years. My first memory of the library is when it was where Danny lines is now, so I mean, I I remember that uh pretty scared. And I spent most of my childhood, most of my memories with the college. I spent a lot of time as a kid there, uh, researching papers, Dr. Ferguson's papers. I was a history major uh in college, so I went back there to uh look up microfilm of all the newspapers. So I I was a heavy user uh at the library uh all through college. Uh, and haven't been so much lately. I did, uh, when my kids were little, we came here at the story hour and things things of that nature. But I'm, I I really uh believe passionately about uh the role of the public library uh in a community. And so I look forward to taking on this role in the foundation. And we are really a a board in transition. You know, we have only six members right now, but I would like to see that expand to nine to eleven members. Um, because we have, uh, since I've taken over, been more of what I would think as a caretaker board and less of a fundraising board. I wanna see us move to a fundraising board. Uh, uh, my experience uh in the nonprofit world is, uh, I have a lot, but it's most relevantly probably Maryville City Schools Foundation, uh, who help Children's Advocacy Center. Both of those are very hardworking fundraising boards. And so, uh, my goal is to see, uh, to add board members from the corporate community, uh, to, so we can um become more active fundraising. Uh, cause I know you all have lots of projects you wanna do. Um, we seek, we seek your all's leadership. We obviously necessarily rely on your priorities. Uh, and we need to see clear priorities from this board. Uh, and we look forward to communicating and hearing what those are. I know, I know what some of them are, but uh again, that's, I'm excited to to be a part and look forward. again, that uh I'm excited to to be a part, look forward to working with you all next several months.
Okay, I have a good idea, thank you. Any questions for the congregation? Okay, were we guys with friends, B?
Friends, well, we did the business, Manny has demonstrated a couple of times. Um so initially, you know, we actually were going to reschedule our summer sale because we thought that parade would interfere with people getting in. But having the fifty percent off day and driving, you know, putting the signs out there, we actually had our best Saturday ever. Um so we're um uh looking at, you know, that for the the next year, I think we wanna sort of tag on to that. Um we have uh so that sale, we actually um made about twelve thousand dollars for our three day sale. Um eBay is still rolling along. Um we have uh we actually made just about eleven thousand dollars in eBay in the month of December. And uh and that includes being closed because of the flood. We closed our store immediately because we didn't know if items that had been purchased damaged. And so um luckily nothing that had been purchased was damaged, but we had a couple other items that had to be um tossed that that they've gotten with. But um but so we're still um doing really public. Joking yesterday, um a lady bought our whole list of um cookbooks. She's a collector, hundred and sixty cookbooks. Which is just out today. So let's say we had a nine hundred dollar day yesterday, so we're we're pretty excited about that. So um we have currently, we have uh over a hundred and ten volunteers, uh active volunteers downstairs. Uh we're still always recruiting more persons. Um we do have some board changes as well, uh Vice President designed last week. Um and she was also our communication director. Um and we have another uh board position that we need to fill, so next weeks uh or or next week uh when uh maybe we have a lot to talk about to to uh get some interim assistance. Um we are working on a new website as well, um working with Slamdot out of um Knoxville. They have they've done the library website for Knox County Friends and we really liked it. So we ended up going with them. And um we've been sort of finalizing pictures and content and everything else. And uh hopefully, if we keep our fingers crossed, um we can have our new site up by um first. The website address will remain the same, it just moved everything uh name to name wise, but keeping our fingers crossed that we get something and that it's a little easier to use because the version of WordPress that we are using now is so non-user friendly that it's just like an act just to get uh something changed, get something updated, it's it's crazy. And so we needed something that's easier to maintain going forward. Um AED training, finally, woo. We got our machine and we finally are scheduling our AED training for downstairs. Uh and 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 too bad Dick's not here, cause you know, he says he's holding off his heart attack in his home um until he has the machine, so he'll be at test dummy's when he tells us. So um but yeah, we're we're excited that we can.
Oh, no, no, you don't have one up here.
An AED.
Yes, yeah, we do.
Do we?
Yeah, we do.
We do that one, where is it?
If you check out that.
Please. Behind the chair, that's okay.
Yeah, so well, we're gonna um have a training coming up too, if you have anybody more in in the library that need to get trained. Um I think it's a similar machine to what you have. Um this Saturday, we have a uh membership drive uh during the seed library and plant exchange. We'll be in the lobby uh with the table for membership, but we're also going to have uh what we call a pop-up sale. And so we'll have gardening books uh available for all the gardeners that we know will be coming in. Uh or plant people, whatever we call them. Um so we're uh we're hoping to have a a lot of fun with with them this Saturday. And then one other thing I threw out there, uh and I got a little history from I think Auntie and Manny. Um but one thing I thought of for you all, I know some of you are new. If you haven't had a tour of the basement and what we do downstairs, um if you'd like to have a tour, we'd be happy to to lead one. And and then and then I found out that, you know, Andy would probably be leading in this better than me.
Ah, not really. You know where the water pools.
He knows how to work the old night.
He hasn't even called me last night. I was here, Manny had already taken that.
The time slide one.
Time slide. It was really fun.
We'll get to the next one, yeah, I'll send that to you.
Thank you, any any questions of the friends? I mean, our friends are just, I mean, they are known to all of the state as being really top friends of the in this state and probably in the country. You really, whatever you do is just amazing, and we really appreciate it.
He's the vice president.
The vice president was Jennifer Spurkow.
Okay, we don't need a report from Liz besides what's.
Uh we just have what she sent in the packet.
So any questions out of this report? Part of her report was a bring your kid to the to the library day, and I don't think we're doing that in most of our kids' things, the libraries are all. Okay, old business, we have a disaster plan for the library that's was in your packet, I think everybody looked at it. It is right in. Are there any question, is there? Is there any discussion on it?
I do wanna say in addition, thank you Lauren, you brought it up last month, a month ago about the library serving as like a disaster recovery center. So I reached out to Ken and Don over at uh in General Services and they said absolutely, so there is a it is much greater.
The highlighted parts are what changed from the past line?
It was I.
I left my important, I read it and left my packet on my desk when I was leaving. The AED conversation just now reminded me, is that part of checking the batteries annually on the AED? They do inspire.
Do. Important. And why, right, they do do inspire.
I'm trying to use good tone to do that. I'm not taking you, just not to bend.
Any other questions, your comments? Assuming everybody.
And John and he, John Stallions and Tim Tipton, you're through as well.
So we need to vote on this. I have a motion to accept this.
Some days.
Seven days. They have opposed? Yeah, so quite on passes. Yeah, I wanna talk a few minutes about the project plan, there's was that twenty weekend plan that you all had a got a copy of. And what I'd like to do is set up a date that we can meet as a group and go through that step by step. Show out some of it, uh some of it actually people look to really well to monitor. And this is not something that you can do like this, this is gonna take several hours, if not more. Maybe several days to go through, just to the employees that were here. Um I think lots to come up with with that plan. Some of that plan is historically not accurate. One of part of it was the the campaign was not making money. People were not happy with having it here. Now it's making money, it's it's a plus to the library and we certainly don't want anything uh negative about it. Actually, we were late, I was trying to figure out a way to expand it and make it more accessible to everybody and 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 make it a bigger a bigger deal than it actually is. And Manny touched base on having another meeting room. That's I think it's something that we need to, and if we're gonna lose a study room, we need to get additional study rooms, and so that that's all part of this plan going forward. Need on that, so. I wanted to know what they, would it would it anything be easier for you all? Question was go with just for a board or for a library or is it still voiced in public over the public now? No. I mean, it can be, but I don't I don't.
Think you can.
It has to be.
Yeah.
It has to be, yeah. Except we did other members.
That's true.
I don't think the other one is a public person.
They're.
I don't, if anybody.
We may be more than two of us, maybe as people.
They can comment, but they can't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's true for every. Yeah, I know that one. And and for a weekend.
That's, I mean, that's okay with me.
Nuts, not not not.
I just think we really need to have a something that is current, ongoing and something that would make sense going forward. This this one doesn't make sense going forward. I mean, basically it was asking us to spend uh what was it, sixteen million dollars uh for basically bathrooms. I I don't even think the elevator was on there, if it was, I I don't remember it. And moving the moving the children's apartment and the restaurant downstairs, which I don't think is good. But that's just me and.
I might be maybe out of order to speak on this, but from the foundation's perspective, we we would really love for you all to address this plan. Cause we are not, we we can't go do a Capitol campaign on a with an elevator, that's just not gonna. We need something comprehensive, we're not in this right now to to do a Capitol, but when we are, we we need it to be something. So clear direction uh from the library with all the stakeholders input for the for us.
So this is why I would like to have spend some time actually going over this. And with as many people from the outside, obviously we will have some construction people in here and see what's possible, what's what's. With the with the old plan, the friends area was being reduced. I can't see your area being reduced.
And I think they should definitely be.
Yeah.
B and A and other members.
You've got to see that part, it's a big a big part of this.
Do we say totally scrap it or do we revise it?
I think what that's while looking, to see what you think, I mean frankly, I'd scrap it, but that's that's just me. A lot of people spent a lot of time on this. And before I say let's scrap it, let's take a look at it, so.
Yeah.
Was this the item burdened off of me? No.
No, no, that was um.
Yeah, okay.
That was sustainability.
It's sustainability, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
This is fine.
So what's what? Can Anna send out a survey and people put in their best times, dates?
We can do that.
Google or whatever it's called now.
You know, i- if you go uh.
Our evenings generally best, so just put.
Afternoon. I mean, I I can be here about four. Um you know, cause I'm out of school, I'll return.
And we do it at night, we'll provide dinner.
I meet you again.
Without a reason. You be the bounce here. But.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, I'm like.
Okay, alright, so you know, we did that. Obviously Chad would want you to. Okay, good, fine. And that's enough on that one, and we'll move forward. But won't won't be next, at the next meeting, there will be a supplement. Okay, um we got the new business, was it any of the old business?
I didn't I didn't mention the fini, if anyone had any questions when it came to finances, so I forgot about that, I'm sorry. I know what the side finances are fantastic, but.
I had I had a mind in it, cause it looks great, fantastic, this uh it looks like the
Yeah.
these are coming in a little bit under expectations. And it was it was like minus seven percent, so not a whole lot, but are those expectations going to revise for?
Like which fees?
Uh was it fees or?
The guidebook, did you give you the guidebook fees?
I think they were. They were so.
And would that would that be for damaged or lost items, I would assume?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have fines yet.
No. And that's one thing that I personally is they appreciate not having the fines.
Which is local.
Because like, well, I like, but well, just for example, I wonder if my coworker's had a wreck in South Carolina.
Local.
And her kids have library books in the car, well, her car is still in South Carolina being repaired. So she's come and talked to somebody and make it a no in and it's like, you know, that that means the world to her. But she came in and said, this is the situation. And those those books are in the car, they're not damaged, they're just in the car and my car is in South Carolina. So and then I had another coworker, kind of the same situation, so I mean.
That's the number one. So let's move on to that.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's yeah.
The borrowing policy, you wanna talk about that?
So that that policy for us, that was with uh Cynthia and myself and Kathy Thompson, um that one's pretty boil and plate, there weren't many changes to that one, that's just borrowing items.
We're not gonna vote on that, we just wanna try to look at this.
Right, yes.
This one.
For next.
Yeah. It's.
My next question was, is do we, or have you always wanna show two proofs?
Yeah.
Did I struggle with that?
So I hold libraries, level five libraries, the Brussels State and St. Louis and the majority of them do that. Yeah, some of them don't, but majority of them.
No, you're fair.
Yeah.
That to me, that's that's the toughest thing.
Well, we don't.
Not that.
Well, and I I think when I always try to get mine in my new home, I didn't have enough proof and I was wanting to go get a library private day. I didn't know about that. Melissa's car.
Postcard, yeah.
It it's to get accuracy of where exactly you live. Um so if you moved here, um and you lived in really Mirable, but now now your your address is in Lewisville, just so it's counted. And so you know that that chart that we have, that's the most accurate we can get when it comes to where are these cards? That that's why other counties do the same thing.
And this is not a, so we can do whatever we want.
Yeah, yeah.
You you guys are the boards, you could you could adjust something, right?
Yeah. You just follow, yeah.
It'd be interesting to know, kind of the hurdle, that the dashboard is a lot, you know, providing papers.
Is it this name? Cause I don't need anything. That's good.
Yeah, they're they're going.
He's a cat woman. I am a cat woman. I am, all the bills are in his name.
Also also the funders that ask us if it's accurate just when it comes to uh when it comes to our budget, so finally, yeah.
That's.
Yes. Yeah.
What's your feelings? I mean, obviously I hear your feelings.
I just think me as a professional established person who yeah, I messed up in a row, it was hard. You know, and I just think about other folks who don't, you know, who struggle. We went through, we went through this when I was on the Board of Family Promise, I mean, it's hard sometimes to show that proof. And then it's kind of like, we're supposed to be providing access to people. And I think if you have license or a utility bill or one thing, I don't know about double proof seems like a hurdle. And I think if you have a license or a utility bill or one thing, I don't know, a couple, proof seems like a hurdle. It should be concerned.
No, if you're well worth it.
I I've moved a number of times the last few years, so my photo ID has been regarding my address.
Yes.
So it makes sense to me by monitoring it. I didn't have a problem with it when I did that. Every card, but it seemed to me maybe you've just one one most recent proof. But accuracy means concern.
You don't have, you no longer have to change your address on your ID, you just have to update it with. Um, T dot or with the whoever it is that brought. So like mine is two addresses ago, but it's updated. When I go to get my new tag, the county has it as my new address, just not physically on my driver's license. So that conflicted to my utility bill.
But we would, that's why we would take the utility bill, because utility bill is post mark date within thirty.
But that's only one.
But it's in my husband's name.
No, no.
You only, if you've got your state ID. That is your photo, then you need one proof, one piece of proof. That's timestamped, so that we know within the last thirty days, you were at the address we're going to send, you know. Notices to or anything like, you know, if we have to take the account collections, unfortunately. They have to have a real address, we have to verify that address some way. Because you're right, the state of Tennessee at least doesn't require you to update the physical card. We don't have access to their databases, so we can only go on the proof of that piece of mail or utility bill.
So your photo ID can't, address can conflict to your utility bill, you'd be okay?
You let people that have out of state IDs, but they have proof that they recently moved here get them. And so it's not proved to.
Then what if you don't have a utility bill under your name?
Shut up, now I'm not gonna get a library card. I have no mail that comes in my name, unless it's a piece of junk. So we would, your junk mail has a post, a trademark, or like a a post stamp on it? Also, if you told us that, we would fill out one of those postcards for you and then you'd bring. Which is what happened twenty years ago when I got my library card.
Okay, when I was reading it, it seemed like you needed two forms. When it, cause it says, and an additional.
The credit card thing?
It says an additional proof.
I don't get credit card. Y'all don't know, I I have no bills in my name. Everything is in my. I'm lying, I have. You know, I mean, it's joint stuff, but.
I guess so, as we go into. As we go into Townsend and to Wallen and Friendsville, we need to be careful of that.
Yeah.
The more rural areas.
So.
And it does say an additional proof.
Well, that we can remove the word additional, that it will show your driver's license or state ID, state card.
That was.
Do they have state IDs in Tennessee?
Um.
They do, yeah.
They postponed it for another year.
What do we do with uh Murrell College students? If they come to the library?
They have to.
Show.
Where they live.
Well, most of them love.
That not the. So if they're.
Are they?
Talk to me, talk to me, somebody that works here.
It they just show their student ID, we ask them for their address, but we don't ask them for a proof of address.
Okay, that like that's that's good.
So. Why would it be any different for residents? I mean, it seems easier to be a college student not paying taxes versus a resident.
But they have an ID.
Because we know that the university probably has a bill with them.
Yeah.
And we can find their address. Whereas if we don't, we don't have an external entity that, I mean, there's issues even within that. But nine times out of ten, the the this is a relationship between the school and the the library saying, okay, you know.
Have there have there any opportunities to shift the burden of checking to public service, so it's the. So could we do like official records check on somebody's ID to verify if on the database. Or living in the area versus forcing them to bring it back or better?
I think it's the expense of that security, yeah. So to answer your question, no, we don't have that at this.
I think we remove additional form and then I would encourage, it was not offered to me to have a card. Maybe some updating on ever frustrating on that. I ultimately got it because like Casey was here and was like. Card, you know. And it was fine and easy, I just worry about other.
You don't have to change that, like have the credibility.
Well, it's Casey, I was at a board meeting.
Okay. Let me think about the next thing.
Yeah.
But again, you are the ones who like. Ching there when you want.
So why are we bringing back things?
So that's the next thing.
That's probably.
Oh, yeah, we can bring that up right now. So the two cases, and again, you're on the board, you decide on. But the two cases that you brought up, those are extreme cases, and no matter if there are fines or not, that would have been handed back. So Cynthia, who is the head of Patriot Services, who she was here before, um, she has been speaking with her staff about. And believe it or not, there are patrons that come in and ask for the fines back. Because what's happening is patrons know they don't have to bring them back and they can keep them for a year. And that just recently happened. Books came back and they were still new, but they were from twenty twenty one. That books are kind of being held hostage. Because they know there are no fines for it, and we've had patrons that want fines back because it keeps them accountable. So Cynthia has spoken to Patriot Services because they're the front line, they're the ones who deal with it. They do want fines back, but it was a little twist this time. So looking at the fines before, they were always a quarter, except that the DVDs were two dollars a day, which I. At that time, that might have been a lot, not for DVDs now, so I'm thinking just do a quarter. And again, this would be voted on next next month across the board when it comes to fines. And this would happen July first, so it gives enough time that we can promote fines coming back. The library, uh, the start of the new fiscal year. So that's the significant change in that second house.
With the employee at the desk have the the capability of saying. No, you don't have to pay a fine if you were in an automobile.
They absolutely do, they would speak to either they could do or manager on, you know. At the desk to do that as well, because those circumstances are e- extreme and absolutely wouldn't wanna charge fine if your cards are in the state and their books are intact. You know, and they're in good standing already that they wouldn't find them, yeah.
I think that's good, I think that, that's that's very, uh, that's good.
Yeah.
My qualification question, I noticed the videos of being split up long DVDs can be, what is a long DVD?
So a long DVD would be a TV series, so if we had Breaking Bad and there's multiple discs.
Okay.
That would be considered a long DVD or CSI or something.
It might be worth defining a little closer here, because I I just assumed something that's more than that, that's.
Yeah.
Versus something that's less than that, but that's not, I didn't see where it was.
Yeah, we could, and and you know, it's funny because I didn't know what that meant either. I was like, what is a long, it's just a renegative change, yeah.
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 So one week, is it one week or four or?
It'd be a quarter a day. Yeah. That's what it was in the past, DVDs were killed up, so.
Okay, any more questions on this?
I wish Cynthia was here, but she could speak more about, and it's true, there are people asking for fines back and the staff want it because. These books, they're on hold forever, because these and these books.
Can't get them back.
You can't get them back as a patron said, and I have a fine.
So even even if you have something on the libia, you don't get it for forty cents.
Yeah.
Or whatever. Twenty one on somebody.
On some office.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm I'm okay, I'm okay with this. I mean, and I know at my school, if a kid hasn't opened it, we don't charge them. But after so long, if they don't turn their book in, they have to do a silent punch, well, that's the worst feature in the world for them. Have to sit by themselves and not talk to anybody, oh, you know, and I'm always the one that has to be in the mirror of that news. If I was saying. So I I mean, I'm okay, I mean, it it. The rule is a rule, I'm a rule follower most of the time.
Okay, let's 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 move on.
Yeah.
Alright, let's leave. Um. Let's jump over to the small programs.
Um, can I turn it over to Andrew now, would you like to turn it over?
Sure.
Uh.
Um, does it uh. With the. Not the wish list, it was the.
No, a bit little things, yeah.
Hmm. Yes, the Harmon and the uh Eileen Kelly projects.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Once we got in a place where we could order, what we were running up against was that in order to get. Invoices that have the proper entity name, we have to set up accounts. And um, that was not something, uh, rightly so, that the foundation wanted to undertake. Because the foundation has a different scope and purpose. So we came up with something and um. Ran it against your your treasure grant grant daughterie, who also does audits. So we were in very good standing to make sure that we were crossing all our um Ts and dotting all our Is. That this process um created the greatest amount of trans uh transparency. So what will happen for um purchases that are of a smaller um. Amount that require multiple vendors? That amount, the uh foundation will write a check to the Friends. The Friends will create a subaccount that only has that money in it. That money I will then spend through our normal um chains of, you know, supply. And then what we'll do is we will present those receipts, the way we do with our Friends requests and all the things when we do our annual Friends request. And um, we will close out that project. If any funds remain, the Friends will write a check back to the foundation for any outstanding funds. There's no carryover, there's no, if if we have twenty five thousand dollars for the small parts of project. The foundation will write to Friends, the Friends will put it, so all along the way, we will be able to see where all the monies are going. If any monies are in surplus, then it will be returned back to the foundation. That's what this says, that's why there's lots of signatures, because we need to make sure that the foundation, the Friends, and the board. Authorities are aware of what we want to do. And then, of course, this will fall in line so that this is reviewed annually, so we need to tweak it.
One of the things I noticed in this is your record is not involved in this, so this takes him out of the loop. Or her out of the loop, this is financial on. Okay, we don't have to vote on that.
Oh.
No, we do.
What we do? Alright, we want, do I have a motion to set? I was. Is there a set?
Second.
Okay, all of you.
I.
Can we close? That's just thank you. Alright, thank you very much. Okay, uh, one last thing, that is evaluation.
Oh, the slap wall, the Friends and Friends, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so that is something and Kathy's here too, I mentioned the slap wall before, this would be for the holmes. The things that would be holding the pamphlets and the literature on a slap wall.
This is in addition to.
Yeah, the wall's already installed, this is just the hole, the the stone, yeah.
This is to hold all the papers and handles to the slap wall and all the literature.
The sign. Okay, do I hear a motion to accept that?
Some would.
Sorry, yeah. All of you.
Aye.
Can we close? Can we both ask this, thank you. That's a great idea, it really was good, too. Okay, uh, last thing, and uh, I wanna go to that group, we all, Manny, we invited him for a while. And we don't get a moment, we're finished. Sorry, actually, we did just leave a lot there. It's the last thing of each other for tonight.
And you should we leave?
Mm-hmm.
Should we leave, so throw it on?
No, you can stay, you you you're a part, so. Uh. And this is, I don't, I don't really want more newspapers.
I have a land report.
Okay, anyway, um, I asked you all to fill out a review, a rating, send. On Manny and how he is doing. So thank you very much for all of you that have have responded, we got fifteen responses. And um, I have totaled the responses together and put them into into your, this little packet. I did it. I gave you two of them. All of the reviews, lumped them together, then I took only the employees' reviews. And then took the not employees that were up together, just to see where Manny stood and how he is, how he is done. And just to get everybody's feelings on this. First of all, the comments were just incredible, I really appreciate all of your your positive comments. And there were no negative comments, but there were there were were comments on how to improve the library. Not necessarily of Manny's performance, but but on how to improve the library. And so this was really a good thing. And we'll be, I've asked Stephanie to sit down with me and we'll take all of these and compile them, then make make the comments. And then review Manny within, doing down the end of the month, and then turn it in to the county. The Personnel Department told me that we have to use this form. And then his raise is based on what his uh. Score is on this and how it fits into the county's structure, which I didn't, I had no idea. I thought we could rate based on this, but you can't do that. So so this has to go through the county, whatever. The thought maybe you should have talked better about that. I I am. Anyway. So all of the reviews, uh, and I did not. I didn't give you a copy again, but his his ratings were in the threes out of out of five, out of four on everything. If you look at his, on this top sheet, this is all reviews, this is everybody who reviewed him. His overall rating was a three point six eight, which out of four is is really good. Uh. His absolute outstanding area was customer service. How everyone commented on how he has react react to the employees and to the community. And gotten involved with with. Different governments in the community and what's going on. And one of the things that we've we've been talking through is, and we talked about today, is going out to other communities in the county. To try to get them involved with the library, and I think he's done an incredible job on that. Then the other way that I put it together was the employees own, you know, if you look at that compared to everyone. The employees rating them higher than anybody, than everybody else, which actually is a really inspiring. I mean, I knew the board was gonna, we're tougher graders, but I expected the employees to be really tough. They, their comments were excellent, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna copy a lot of the comments and just use them as part of his. As long as Stephanie agrees with that too. I mean, the comments were incredible, always did a wonderful job of putting back in in their input. Uh, one of the comments was, it's so refreshing today than what it was a year ago. And that's or two years ago, so that is really, really good.
Well, and to me, they're close, almost, they're they're very close, you know, with all of us that make it here to the board.
Yeah, no.
So that's that's good for me.
Really, really, really was, so I wanted to share that with you before we go again. And then when when we finish putting this together, then I'll give you a copy. I will not share that with anybody besides Manny and and you all, but that's it. So I just wanted wanted you to know, uh, now, by the end of the month, to. And then any kind of, again, from what I understand from the county, any kind of an increase as we put it in the budget. and then any kind of, again, from what I understand from the county, any kind of an increase as we put it in the budget. So that's it, so any questions on that, thank you all for participating. I know I had to, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate it, it's Christmas and it's the holiday season. And but when it came back, it came back and just really did well. And if you didn't know, one of the things that I really appreciated, if you didn't know how to review, just that I don't know. And three years ago when we did this, I I did the same there, I said, I can't, I can't review this person, I I have no idea. And that's what it should be.
We get some of those comments on how to improve the library for our planning meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That was so great.
Is that in the survey?
That's the.
Mm, remember they did a survey?
Yeah, I thought the survey, we we need to get that.
But this is employee cards.
Yeah, they would.
I mean, these are important comments, and actually
And it's.
there wasn't a whole lot in there to to improve the library as much as to improve for the for the employees themselves and for me. But it was all all of us. So, that's great. Well, thank you, uh any questions on this? I I hope this was okay to do this way, I I don't really know another way to do this, but.
And I would say in the future, you can meet individually with each board member, share the reviews, that kind of becomes public, not that you're
becomes so public, you know. Sorry to interject, can't beat two, students should.
Maybe one or more.
Two board members together talking about my very business.
Yeah.
It's it's public.
Okay.
Yeah, sometimes.
It's true, it's not Manny.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry about that.
Yes, that makes sense.
Of course.
Unfortunately, all Tennessee library directors know when they start the position, basically, it's public record.
It's public. It is.
And what what H.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good in this.
Just like.
In the past, I asked the HR department to use a different form, because the library is so different. Well, they said yes, for the previous direction, let's say.
But but we could look, there, I think there, I think we've got gaps in this, so that may be, that's a different day, a different time that really, I think there are some other survey instruments out there, we could do this for the county, but then
Right.
for we could we could come up with our own as well, don't you think?
Well, we we we. Survey.
I mean, I.
And I would like to see them.
A little more specific to a lot.
Yeah.
Put your marks in between this.
Yeah.
So so it was a little, it was a little more difficult to to
Yeah.
Because that's why you see point eights, point seven fives and whatever, because there were in between votes, which is, I knew that. And so I expected everybody else to do the same.
Yeah.
It would get them other things.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
For more specific to the decision.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, is there any other business?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I hope everybody had a great holiday, and our next meeting is, you know, you have one reading question.
Okay.
I got the survey about the brain marketing survey, um just wait a second, are we gonna get a result on that at future meeting or discussion point later?
Yes, we. Um it's it's just being sent to them and they're gonna work from that, so it's visual voice, the brand, PR branding.
To do uh new logo designs for the library?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh I just wonder if I expect, oh, just, I'm excited to see new logos.
Wow. Probably two months, maybe a vengeance.
So the what what has taken place so far is that we have um
Yeah.
the the step that that survey was getting input was to give them how the stakeholders, the staff um and the community uh that were sent that to um or had the survey sent to, how they see and envision the library, what it means to them. Now they're taking that away and they're kind of um storyboarding it so they can come back with options. We haven't had a we haven't had a um a further update, but it is very new into the process. We met with them for fifteenth, I think.
Yeah.
So with the holidays, it current.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any any other questions? Thank you all, appreciate it, hope that that, yeah, that everyone has been coming in. This is a new year and I hope everything goes well, told it's way behind.
Lose the jar.
Me too, the meeting.
Okay.
If you're if you're focused.